So we're just gonna, I'm gonna give a brief update and then happy to kind of turn it over to the board and our consultants that we brought for questions. We just kind of want to start a review of what we've been working on the past few months, this is the last report of the board. So the project was last year at the August 1st Planning Board meeting. At that time, the applicant had submitted our kind of whole site plan set. And we had conducted kind of initial testing on all the new and existing wells on site. And at that meeting, the Planning Board decided to hire a hydrogeologist to kind of help them, help the board take a hard look at the well and water supply materials. So leaving that August meeting, in August and September, the town and the Planning Board kind of went through the necessary steps to onboard their consultant, Hanson Van Leeuwen. So we kind of provided them with the whole suite of project materials for them to review. And then towards the end of September is when we kind of got guidance on additional kind of testing strategy for the wells that would need to be done to kind of complete that review. And that involved looking at the full system in operation, right, deciding which wells were going to be utilized, and testing those at the full kind of max daily demand that would be required for the project. So in October, our hydrogeologist, Sterling, they conducted what's referred to as step tests of the viable wells on site to determine the safe kind of field of each of those wells. And that process is outlined in detail in the hydrology, hydrology report that you all have. After that, based on the results of that, of those kind of step tests, we found out that well four and well five were the most viable wells that could supply the max demand, the max daily demand needed for the project. So we moved on in November and December to doing individual seventy-two hour test, step test, seventy-two hour tests for each of those wells, well four and well five, at thirty-two gallons per minute each, right? Because we need one well to supply the project, and then you need a backup well of that thirty-two gallons per minute as well. So we did those tests over November and December, which then gets us to January when the report was kind of compiled and turned over. So I know it feels like a long time since we've been here, but those are kind of the steps we've been taking to provide you with the hydrology report that you have in front of you. Also, over the last few months, our civil engineering team, LRC, was working to finalize the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the SWIP. And so that was submitted to the board in November in its complete form, as, you know, meets DEC regulations. And then with that, there was some minor modifications to the site plan. No buildings or roads or anything that's changed. It was mostly the bio-retention ponds and things like that being shifted and expanded, just to accommodate the finalization of the SWIP. So that, again, that final site plan was submitted to you in November as well. And then the one only, the only other new item provided to the board since we were last here was the water demand for irrigation memo. So that was again submitted in November, and that memo outlines the specific details for our approach to irrigation for landscaping. So water for irrigation will be pulled from the existing non-DEC regulated pond on site during the initial phases of kind of construction. One of our first phases is getting the buffer landscaping planted and established. So we'll be using that onsite pond for that initially. And then once the system is up and running, we've designed the stormwater on site specifically so that stormwater can be utilized to, for the limited irrigation that we need. So that's why you do not see the irrigation water demand in the hydrology report because that's not going to be pulled from the potable water system, from the wells. So that's the new materials. Like I said, we have the team here to answer any questions, but at this time, we think we've submitted the, you know, our final site plan and the complete secret record for the board to review. So we're available to answer questions, help you with your kind of, your kind of secret review. And I do have some boards if you wanted to, if you want to, if there's any questions on the site plan or anything like that.
All right, before we go into the water, I don't know, any questions on site plan?
So this is to comment on what it said, or is it going over the, any of the water report?
I was gonna get to the water report next, I'm seeing if anybody's got questions on the site plan and then go to the water report.
We need to see that.
You can turn it around afterwards, too.
It's an open meeting law.
You can see it in a minute.
I'm not saying anything, she's just looking at it.
We need to see everything.
You're gonna see it. Is that better? Now you can see what I'm looking at? I just want to look at it because it's the first time I've seen it. Yes, I, this is my first meeting.
Can I go away?
We should hear you.
Can everybody keep it down, please?
We want to hear you.
If you keep it down, we will.
Talk, talk on the record.
So as I was saying, the fire trucks can fit on these roads, and they have met with the fire department and gone over all the roads to make sure that all the turns are the way they need to be, that the fire trucks can get to all the necessary homes, that the bridges are sufficient to hold all the fire trucks. So they've gone over all that with the fire department, and the fire department had no issues with any of it.
Andrew, you want to come up and explain your demo?
Well, it's important. Can I do that?
Yeah, yeah. I can start with fire, and if you get more, you can go.
Take as long as you want. Yeah, so as was mentioned, so Andrew Millsburg, Sterling Environmental Engineering. We were brought on by the applicant to facilitate the water well testing and evaluation. And that started off with the assessment of all the onset wells, testing flow capacity of each one to determine which ones could yield water, which ones had high yield, which ones had low yield. And as part of that evaluation, a handful of wells only had five, seven, ten gallons per minute when the max daily demand for this project is thirty-two. We did identify the two wells, identified as four and five, pretty close to each other, that had the capacity to yield that amount, thirty-two gallons per minute. So we moved on to doing the, what was referred to as a seventy-two hour pumping test, and that's a standard process established by the DOH and the DEC for determining the yield of the aquifer to be able to supply whatever demand you're, you're looking at. So in this case, thirty-two gallons per minute. The first test was done in November, second test was done in December. And those take some time because there's a week of background monitoring, there's the seventy-two hour test, and there's a week of after-test monitoring to see how the groundwater, what the baseline condition is, and then what the post-pumping condition is. So those were done in November and December. It's worth noting that the November test was done during drought conditions. And one of the, one of the design standards in the seventy-two hour pumping test protocol for situations where recovery is slower, which pairs in a bedrock aquifer. So all the wells here are getting their, their water from bedrock cracks, fractures. So those behave differently than if you're in a sandy gravel where you have all that, that space providing water. So you often get slower, slower recoveries. So as part of that protocol, we do an extended review. So if you looked in the figures on the report, that looks at a one-hundred-and-eighty-day projection. And that's, that's a one-hundred-and-eighty-day use of the well pumping twenty-four-seven at the maximum demand of thirty-two gallons per minute to see what that projected impact would be on, on the aquifer. So what we saw was that on the wells that were being pumped, the water level would still be above the pumps. And on the off-site wells being monitored as well, the water would still be within the wells. If you read through H U B's review, you know, they also agreed that there's, there's essentially two water-bearing areas here. You look at half the wells we monitored that shallow groundwater, half the wells we monitored had deep groundwater. That's indicative of where they're, where they're tapping into, you know, the water, what fractures they're, they're completed in. And I guess lastly, I'd just say that the, the test, the test itself is intended to be conservative. The maximum daily demand assumes the full buildout of the property at full occupancy, every bedroom occupied, every seat in a restaurant occupied, all using the maximum design water amount, yep?
What is that number, it's full capacity?
Sorry?
What is the full capacity number?
That's the thirty-two gallons per minute.
No. If you're at full capacity, how many people is that?
That's in the table in the report, so it was.
It's based on bedrooms?
Yeah, it's based on, right, so two-hundred-and-seventy-two bedrooms, three-hundred seats in a restaurant, eighty-two, eighty seats in the amenity space, forty-five seats in a bar, seventy seats in a spa, three machines in the laundry room, hundred employees, two-hundred seats in the event barn, and the utility backwash.
Try that again. I just, I just want to hear the numbers.
Yeah, so you don't, I guess you only have to write that if you don't want, it's in the, it's in the report.
Are you answering if there's enough for your project, or enough to do the project and not hurt everyone's wells? Seems like the line is confusing here.
Right.
We don't care if you can support the amount of the project.
So I'll get to the public hearing portion in a bit.
I'd like to address the board's questions at this point. All right, yeah, so that table is in the report, and that's the, that's the maximum daily demand. So full buildout of the project, full occupancy of all the intended uses, all using the maximum water.
What's that number, for people that you counted?
It's not a total.
Oh, it's not?
It's about eight-hundred.
Eight-hundred?
But I think someone can correct me if the number of people.
It's more than eight, thank you. I just wanted to get it on camera.
Thousand and seventy-one.
That's if every single person was talking about it.
And every seat, every.
That's two-hundred-and-seventy-two bedrooms. Is that two-hundred-and-seventy-two bedrooms, or is it max capacity of the bedrooms?
Well, that's bedroom, so the way that these, yeah, the way that those capacities are, are based on is.
I understand how well owners tend to do it based on how many bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah, based on bedroom, right.
No, I understand.
And can you run through, there is three different proposed mitigating factors. Can you run through those for the board?
Yeah, so the, I guess the potential mitigation factors in there for, for the well pumping. There were observed influence at two offsite wells. And one mitigation factor there is to deepen the wells and ensure the pumps are installed at a depth that is deeper than the drawdown observed. That way, it's, it's ensured that those wells are always in, in water offsite. The second mitigation yep, was connecting to the water supply. So those two offsite properties that were observed are, they share a property line, they're directly adjacent to the, to the project. So they could feasibly be connected to the water supply as additional dwelling units as part of the project. And if that was the case, then the capacity of the project would just be reduced by the amount of water needed for those two dwelling units.
Are they the only two that were observed, or are they the only two?
Only two that hadn't observed impact, right, right. And then the, the third proposed mitigation was for the, what was noted in, in H U B's letter, the, the slower recovery. And as described in, in our report, you know, we attributed that to the stratified aquifer. And there was a lot of technical review in there. But what can, what can be done is that this project is being constructed in phases, and those tabulated values are intended to be on the high side because those come out of a wastewater design guidance, and they want to ensure that when you use those tabulated values, you, you over-design and have a, have a facility that, that's not undersized. So in practice, those numbers are always high when you, when you build out and you have your, your facility. The actual usage is less than those tabulated values. So there's a pretty good breaking point in the phasing of the project where it's at about fifty-six percent buildout. And you have occupied structures, the restaurants built, and you could monitor the actual water use. And the, the method that was used in this, in this analysis for determining the, the maximum design daily demand is based on the tabulated values. The, the design standard has another method where you can use actual metered water flows. So once the project is built to the phase at the, at the midpoint, you can get the actual metered water flows, which is likely going to refine those numbers down. And then you have an opportunity to actually monitor actual usage, pump cycling, and what that, what that impact on the, on the water table is to confirm the findings of the report.
Okay, I have another question. How many offsite wells did you monitor?
We monitored six, I believe. And there was a prior monitoring of an additional three. So we have monitoring data for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine properties offsite.
And do they all touch your property or the project's property, or some of them further away?
Some of them are further away, yes.
And you had problems with two?
Well, we had, we had an exert impact, like an exert influence from the well, yeah, from the pumping.
How would you have to monitor after the fact? And if there's an issue, what do you do then? You get the actual figures when you're getting it beforehand, how, how would that be proposed as a mitigation?
Well, one of the things that secret handbook allows for is, is when you're looking at impacts. So in this case, you're looking at, you're projecting impacts into the future because you can't, you can't run a pumping test for, you know, half a year, a year, two years.
Why don't you have?
But once you have actual data, and, and what, what the secret handbook allows for is actually monitoring phases of that development to, you know, verify the, the projections and the data that were into this summary. So we're indicating the report that is adequate water supply. Shows a point to monitor those actual, actual water uses, actual drawdowns, actual recoveries in practice beyond what's being modeled and projected. At a point where you're, you got, as a board now, as a project, you're, this is being looked at at the full buildout, which is appropriate. You want to look at the full buildout of the project to, to see what the potential impacts would be. But with the phasing of the construction, it gives you intermediate benchmarks to be able to, to, you know, step off.
And if the solution, yeah, if the solution was needed, right, if you get to that monitoring.
Yeah, what if you, you, you look at your full buildout, and it seems like you're saying you're right, and then it isn't? You scale back after the fact?
You would either need to find additional sources of wells to bring into that system, or reduce the.
Reduce the size of the project, right.
Yeah, reduce the maximum.
Even after, and potential approval?
Yes, I think the idea is to kind of take a snapshot and do a, like, actual analysis after so many bedrooms are built, after the restaurant is built. Do, do another study because you have actual information instead of theoretical information. And then, once that report is done and the analysis is taken, we would have to work with the town's hydrogeologists to figure out, do we need another well, do we need to test another well that will not have any impacts? Do we need to reduce the further phases that haven't been built yet? Yes.
So there'll be a stipulation that, hey, you have to come back at that point to look at.
Well, I think it would depend on the hydro, the hydro study, the actual numbers. We don't feel like it's going to be an issue, but if the town wants to take another look after we build so many units, you know, that's fine, we can take another look, we're pretty confident everything's going to be fine. But, you know, we understand, you know, the actual data, it might be easier, doesn't make people more comfortable.
The water report says there is an issue and gives three mitigations.
Correct, it says potential issues, there are, there are potential issues. And these are the mitigation measures to, to basically minimize or reduce any risks.
For example, like the issues, right, and the significant issues. So the two wells that we saw, offsite wells, that we saw drawdown in, right? Those drawdowns were fifteen feet and twenty feet. There's still a, over a hundred feet of water column in each of those wells, right? It's just where the pump is sat. So that's why one of the mitigations, right, is put those pumps down lower. So like, is that a significant issue or just an issue that can be addressed? So I think our findings in the report is that we do not feel like there's significant impacts that cannot be addressed, but we are offering these mitigation options for the board to consider.
But you wouldn't do it before? Like, for example, the mitigation of a deeper well and lowering the pump and checking if that does do anything?
Yeah, I think we could, especially for that one, like, one of the wells, the pump is sat really high, one of the offsite wells, because there was a collapse in the well, and so they had to kind of re-put the pump in. So the pump we know is very high in that one. So I think that is definitely something that we would offer in terms of re-drilling that well to get that pump down into the full water column. Could be done initially, yeah.
And we noted that in the report that, absent of all the findings, what, there was a recommendation that, based on the knowledge of where that pump was set. You know, you're, it, it's, it's missing out on a, on a hundred-and-forty feet of water column just because of where the pump is set, that it should just be lowered.
Have any questions? How can we just, oh, put the well pump down where it's supposed to be then, so that you know it's there, instead of guessing what you're trying to do? These are the neighboring wells.
Right, the neigh, the neighboring wells, so, right, right. So that's what we said, the recommendation for the one is to.
You have another hundred feet of water in the well, you're saying, how can we not lower the pipe?
It's not our pump.
It's a private problem.
It's the neighbors. It's the neighbors?
Yeah, yeah.
Have spoken to the neighbors, and they're willing to do that?
I mean, afterwards, it seems like you think that that's wonderful, you lowered it now.
Yeah, yeah.
We know if that's an issue or not, right?
You guys would put these in place prior to starting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the offsite wells, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you should approach the neighbors, see if that would be allowed.
Yeah. Absolutely intended, yeah.
If that's a mitigation that's going to work or not, before then.
This is an opportunity for more wells to be tested in neighborhood. There's a lot of people that live in the area.
They answered us? Yeah, no, I mean, we, we tested the wells, we put out solicitations, and we tested the wells that responded that we could, we could incorporate within the testing.
I think there's an opportunity to test more wells, is what I'm saying.
You know a lot of people say no?
They, they wanted information that we could not provide at the time to be included, so we could not include them. There was a full solicitation that was sent out.
What is school name, the whole town, or round top two, two streets away?
Well, go to the public hearing portion after they finish, and you'll be able to.
Well, maybe you should ask her to clarify.
You guys just sit there and listen. He sent a list out, and the town has a copy of the list of all the things that we solicited. And so we tested the wells, obviously we need permission. Can't just go and test people's wells. We tested the wells, people have given us permission. We sent a list, it's, it's on file with the, the Planning Board's office. You know, we still got nine wells that we tested offsite.
You know, there's like what we saw in terms of where we're seeing the impact, right? There is a certain direction, I believe, of the water fracture where we're, we are standing with those intercalates between them.
Right, so the offsite wells that, that were monitored would not. Right, so the off-site wells that, that were monitored with no impact, we wouldn't expect to go further now. It's up to monitor because if we don't see impacts there, we're not going to see impacts further away.
They're testing in the summer, is this?
Yeah, yeah, we did it during, we tested, we wanted to test it during showers in the summer.
I'm just looking at the report that we got, the chapter, whatever. And, right, the pages, page, page number two, paragraph five, page, page number three, paragraph three. Page five, paragraphs four, five, six, seven. Page six, paragraph two, saying that, you know, you don't have the water management of this project. Might be mitigate, no, but stuff. Bottom line, that doesn't be any good. And I think really that something else is better than this one we have here. These questions for this have to be answered.
The other thing is, dropping a thousand-page report a week before a meeting and then giving us this today doesn't help out with a timeline here. And we're discussing issues and probably other issues will come to mind. And that's been a, a problem along the way. So as far as that goes, I mean, one of the mitigations I see is not only looking at those wells, another mitigation could be a smaller project, you know, to balance out any of these issues that have been brought up to us.
Based on our report, we, I, I, I guess just to counteract that, we believe there is enough water. We have the report showing that there is sufficient water to meet the maximum daily demand in two separate wells, right? So we have one and we have a backup system.
Right, so I?
And so the only big question is whether that can recover fully. And that's why we're offering?
And I'll just, I'll just add with H V D's comments of, you know, suggesting a lower flow rate and what you're suggesting of a reduced project size, that's, that's the gist behind the third mitigation of, there's a point where it's only fifty-six percent built.
Right.
Where if, if there's a, a, a point where to get approval for phase, you know, phase two, you know, that, that remainder of the project, there has to be a comeback and, and get that approval, then potentially this is a fifty-six percent of the project development. Or based on what we're, what, what we're presenting, we, you think, you know, we believe in, and feel that the water is there. And that gives you an opportunity to look at a reduced size project. And for H V D's comment, that's going to be at a lower flow rate because it's a fifty, you know, it's at fifty-six percent of the project.
So even though we're looking at everything, you're going to come back early phase?
Depending on the water study, the actual, if we have actual study and analysis from the actual usage of fifty-six percent, we come back.
And how will we know when that study is done and supplied, whether it's good or not?
It would be a condition.
Given the water report, if we were to, and this is all I told you, but if we were to go forward and say, you know, we're going to allow the project with these proposed mitigations, those would have to be conditions to the approval in order for them to be effective. So that essentially what they're proposing is saying there would be a condition to the approval upon, I believe it's phase four, when it's five, when it's fifty-six percent on the? Oh, phase seven A, sorry. The first four phases are infrastructure. Once that phase is complete, they would then have to complete a full water study and say, all right, this is what we have. And in order to get to the next phase, they'd have to?
Screw that they can be?
Correct. Correct.
Now, the two that, that?
That's the proposal, from my understanding.
You had the observed impact, have you done anything past there? Like, so here's, say, here's the two wells. Have you gone to the people that are across the street or around there to check their water flow?
Yeah, we, we did. So on, on the other side, you have the, you have the creek there. And then we did do the property on the other side and didn't see impacts.
So are these two side by side?
Yes.
One of those wells is mine. And I know they just have to drop the pump down for her, it's my well, because I raised it up from there. The other well that's been impacted is only a couple hundred feet away from where my well is now.
Is green at all?
Yes.
Okay. And these other red ones were fine? Palka, where's the one across the street? The other one? Palka?
Yeah, we did that.
See the other one?
So all the ones in red, we did, and then there were some earlier studies that were done. So this one here was also? No. This one was out, this one. Yeah.
And you saw no impact there?
Right, right. Essentially what we're seeing is a draw line.
In joint agreement, what's it, you press the, what's the flow would be at fifty-six percent?
Um, well, we'd probably be around twenty gallons per minute.
A little bit.
At the tabulated values.
Right, so if you, if you use a full build-out, the forty-six thousand two hundred twelve gallons, fifty-six percent of that, it's going to be around twenty-five, thirty-five gallons per day. Over a twenty-four hour period, that flow gets reduced from thirty-two gallons per minute to around eighteen gallons.
So did, uh, did you get this report? When did you get this report?
This letter came out today, right?
A little too close set before meeting, but the other thing is, one of the mitigations that you're proposing from a real estate point of view is hooking up those two wells to this project. So in looking at that as a homeowner, if I had that situation, marketing-wise, I'd have to say when I'm going to sell it, well, I don't have a well on site. I have the neighbor's well, which is also a resort. It's, in my mind, not a great mitigation proposal.
No, that would be, it would require transportation corporation, right? Because you'd be going from property to infrastructure, which, again, we don't feel like that mitigation is going to be necessary based on what we're seeing these days.
All right, and so with that in mind, I wouldn't call that one of the mitigations. So we got the deeper wells, the deeper well pump?
Yeah.
And scaling back on the project.
Phasing the project and checking in with additional data, real-time data.
So those are kind of the real mitigations that I think are feasible, right?
Yeah. And you guys would pay for the cost of the deeper wells for the? Yeah, that'll be borne by the project. Okay, so I, I really believe that these two across the street, these two houses that I can see on the map? Those wells, you should try to see what goes with those wells. Because there's a house here and there's a house underneath this word right here. So there's two houses directly that are probably on the same water line, I would, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, not for sure, but it looks like you did the houses beside it, right? We did all the ones that responded and gave us consent to? Just the red ones?
Yes. In this last, in this last.
Yeah, nobody asked us.
Then I would probably do that one on this one, because it's a house right there. And then there's four wells that you should try to get people to consent to let you do it. And I would imagine, seeing everyone here, they would not say no because they're concerned. It's their house. And if these, if these are, could be a problem, these might be a problem.
So what was the concern?
Everything touching that could be a problem.
You do the trick circles for?
So what was the concern on some wells that you couldn't accommodate? They were willing to do it, but you couldn't accommodate what you were proposing to reach, right now?
Yeah, there were just some when we put out, so we put out solicitations within, like, I think we started at five hundred feet and then we went out to fifteen hundred feet kind of within a circle, right? But not even though that there's a problem. And so we should probably try to reach those people, yeah. And some of those, and some of the, when we were doing the initial solicitations, we're requesting information that we were not able to provide, right? It was, if you give us this, we will participate and monitor the system. Like, what kind of stuff were they asking for? I'd have to, these emails were back in the summer. So it was kind of the full plan of what was all the testing that was going to be done? When will this be done? What time will this test happen? Just information we didn't have at that time. And so we couldn't sit there, we needed to start doing this testing to provide information to this board. So if, if that was the response, then we moved on to the other ones that were willing to participate.
I think it's important to note that we did work with the town's hydrogeologist consultant in developing a methodology that was approved for this testing protocol. So this is something that we moved forward back in the fall with the town's consultant. They were aware of the wells that were tested and they felt that if the, you know, the, the group of wells that we tested was a representative of the aquifer.
So just the mitigation, do you, you feel like we should look at them instead of retesting?
Well, I think that the two wells that were affected were indicating, were, were explaining to you why we think that there was an impact. And so they clearly had?
On one of them, not the other.
Well, we can address the, the other well as well. And again, there wasn't, you know, one of, in the green well, there wasn't a reported loss of water during this testing. There was a drawdown, but because their pump was set in a certain location, there was no report of loss of water during the testing, right? So there was drawdown, but there was no impact to the water service. And, I mean, it seems feasible that both of those wells are obviously showing the impacts that we're seeing simply because of the location of the pump.
So you think that if, if, I'm not sure where he is, Mr. Rossman's well was retested, if you drop, if he dropped his pump down, you think it would show the same as green?
Well, there's an issue with dropping the pump down because there's a, there's a collapse at the well. And so that well has to be redoubt. And we're, obviously we're eating, we're willing to do that, we're willing to do that with little responses. So that's an easy mitigating factor.
But what if the wells across the street have the same problem? Or the, oh, the wells on your side, which you didn't test, what if they have the same problem? And we all, we would only know that if you tested those four, these two and these two.
Right, so this one here was tested across the street, and I see that, yes.
These are the two problems.
Yep.
Talk about this one, this one, this one, and this one. There's a house right underneath it.
Yep.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to make it more difficult or more costly for you. I just think that if these two have a problem, and I understand what you're saying, okay, this one, it's because of the collapse and whatever, but we know that there's an issue because there's two. So why not test?
Which one?
I'll have to see. I want to look to see if those are the ones that were in the initial testing that were removed. Because right now, you're seeing the last six that were, that were agreed upon by all the hydro, by the board type in ours, right? There's additional ones in there because we originally did all the ones adjacent to the property. So they, I, I don't have what address that is that you're looking at right now to see if that was one of the ones that was monitored. There was no communication and therefore was removed. Across the street and the side, yeah, I see what you're saying. You did have the adjacent, yeah, right.
And I, I just want to clarify when, you know, we're saying there was a, a direct influence. We're not, we're not saying, at least in our report, that there was a significant impact. With the well, three hundred and forty feet, a hundred and forty feet of water column, we saw fifteen feet of drawdown. So the impact from the onsite pumping, there was an influence, but not a significant impact. The condition of his well is that his pump is set high, so that can get mitigated down. And I think at the same time?
But in order to do that, he needs a new well, right? Because there's something where there's a problem.
You could over-drill the same, like, the driller could, could do that. And I think at the same time, the green well, they didn't have ad hoc documentation on their well. They weren't able to provide how deep their well was, where the pump was set. As we mentioned, they didn't have any interruption in water service during the testing. So based on their water elevation and proximity to Eddie's well, we can assume that, that it's probably pretty identical, the condition of, of that well. But that driller, at the same time, if he's servicing Eddie's well, could also pull the pump, find out what the depth is, get, you know, get the actual ad hoc information on the green well at the same time.
But further testing on these four would, would mitigate that? Because if, if it was just unique to those two because of those two situations, then nobody else would have a problem. But if other people have a problem, then it's probably not unique just to the two of them. Do you know what I'm saying? But if we don't have that information, we don't know.
Well, problem, problem would be if it was drawn down below their pump, they can't have access to water. Not that there's just any drawdown of the water column. If you pump water underground, you're going to, you know, you, you make a cone, you suck down the water, there's going to be observations at adjacent wells, it's whether or not it's a significant impact or not.
Just based on the back and forth, maybe an idea would be to get together with the guys as the hydraulics and look at any, your opinion and our opinion of our guy, if further testing is going to do anything else, or just maybe look at the mitigation that's been proposed, except for, I think, hooking up a bit of projects' wells, which I don't think is a good mitigation.
Sure. Yeah, I think H V D did weigh in that the mitigation was reasonable.
They did not look, they did not, we'll have to look at the name for the other one. But we have reached out to those because they were in that trajectory. But that's part of the submission that we made in terms of our outreach, so. Okay, but on taking now?
And also, we've also been reaching out to D O H and we foiled all complaints to see if anyone was making complaints to D O H. And over the, I think, between June and, we just received them in January, there was one complaint within the vicinity.
Okay, but I'm just thinking that now that there's an issue?
Yeah.
They might reconsider having the wells tested and make sure that it's not going to?
But I guess the question is, if they say no, are we held hostage?
Yeah.
Well, no, if they say no, we can't.
They've already said no once.
And I think we provided you?
Right, so I think provide us kind of just with a recap and showing it a little more clear on, on that. And if the height, our hydraulics is kind of agrees and we're having pushback, then, you know, there's evidently some mitigation that's necessary.
Al, anything?
No.
We're not to the public hearing quite yet.
It's all a public hearing.
So just so we're clear, then you're asking us to provide?
It's a public meeting, the whole thing is in a public hearing.
It is by definition.
I wanted just, I just wanted to get clarity of exactly what you were asking us to provide you. So just a summary and a recap of all the wells that we attempted to monitor and monitor. It, it has been provided to the town. Obviously, we don't have it with us tonight because we didn't think it was something that you had an issue with, but we have provided you with that.
Well, we probably didn't know we had an issue until we got our, until we got the paperwork today.
I think she's saying that the, the test sites for the neighbors were already approved with your, the, the planning board's hydro.
And, and the hydrologist isn't recommending any additional testing of wells, so he wasn't asking?
He's just given his mitigation.
Right, he's saying that you, you provided a representative overview, so a snapshot of what is acting underground with respect to the aquifer. And he isn't recommending any additional monitoring of wells. He's indicating that we have provided mitigation and his conclusion is that they were reasonable. I, I understand that the one isn't reasonable, but we wanted to all of that. So we have mitigation that we've offered that he concurs is reasonable.
And you have in writing that these people refused to have their wells tested? These four people?
I don't, like, it's hard to see on the map that we're looking at. Some of those wells were tested and some of them were requested to be tested. And there was either refusal or we couldn't accommodate their requests.
Could you give us a, if, if those four properties are on there?
Sure.
That would be correct.
We can provide you with that summary. But at this point, we think that, you know, your hydrogeologists are finding in, we will find in, they both agree to a study. That study took the last, you know, many, many months. And we provided you with a summary of this report and we offered mitigation. Your consultant was good enough to review that mitigation terms and, you know, he concluded that the mitigation that we're offering is reasonable.
Two out of the three are reasonable.
Well, we, we, he didn't say one or the other. I understand your issue with the third. We think drilling the well, the two wells, is a perfectly reasonable mitigation that we wanted to offer. If you didn't think that that was the case.
Two testings, they tested well four, and then five.
Including the sustainability, part of the work plan that they would be doing. Right. And that would be further justification as to what the balance is of what would happen. Maintaining the thirty-two gallons a minute. So, we had a reduced, keep drawing that, a reduced demand on the aquifer. And with that, that would be part of the mitigation plan that would be rolled into options one, two, or three. I think they still have some homework to do. And to continue the relationship between Sterling and Hanson Van Blee to bring this together.
Well, we think that we provided the board with the final report and the mitigation. And I think the memo that you got today from your consultant indicates that he agreed that he finds those mitigation to be reasonable. And, you know, at this point, I'm not sure what additional homework we need to provide. We did provide the town with a list of all the wells that have been monitored. We have previously provided you with a list of all the wells that we sought to be monitored and weren't able to. But, you know, this was the methodology that was approved by the consultants.
It was discussion, whether it was approved or not between the two parties, I like that.
Your consultant isn't recommending any additional testing of any additional wells outside of the parameters that we've tested.
That's true.
Do you have a copy of this?
Yes.
Can I just say something?
I just want to thank Rich Lorenz and Kevin Hicks for their years of service to this town. Those two gentlemen are now long on the board. Rich, for more personal reasons. But Kevin Hicks, who was due to a question of integrity from the public, to someone who was very, not only very knowledgeable, precise, and impartial, but honest. It was a disgrace to witness that at the meeting that it would happen. And I can't say I blame him for leaving. But that being said, it's an honor again to serve on this board and look out for the public in promoting good commercial development with members I have worked with before. And to the applicant, please don't drop thousand-page things on us seven days before a project, a meeting. Okay, it's not a good practice and it's not happened once, it's happened one.
That the only question?
Who's he talking to?
Talking to the applicant.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
So, I'd like to address the fact that they reached out every day, right? They called me at work at four o'clock in the afternoon, asked me if I could be there today, that day, to get my well checked. I told them, no, I have a job, sorry. Then they said, well, you only have till Saturday. That was a Thursday, it was eleven twenty-six, I had the phone conversation right here. So, that is not adequate information if you're doing this. That's Natalie Quinn, you called me.
What's your name, sir?
Joseph Marino.
Marino?
Marino, M R O I N. I was in the previous testing. And if they weren't so rude and didn't demand that I come home when they needed me, I would have done the testing. But they haven't done anything to be nice to the citizens in Round Top. So, if they want to, they never sent me any email, no paperwork. They called me at four o'clock. I have it right here. And I know Joe knows where I work, because I work in the car, Joe. And I'm a very busy person.
I don't know what it's called now, it used to be BMW South Hall.
Yeah, it's still BMW South Hall. I'm a technician for BMW South Hall. I'm flat rate, that means I have to make my outs. That doesn't mean I get to drink coffee instead of tools.
Can you state your name?
My name's Ryan, I live at one fifty-four Bald Hills Road North. We participated in the first well test. We wanted to participate in the second well test. The communication we got in October seventh from NARC stated that you did not. In fact, I can read it and say, if no response is provided, it will be assumed that you wish to continue in the program and we will notify you online below. Well, we were never notified, so we never had a second test.
Where's your property?
One fifty-four Bald Hills Road North.
But how close is that?
Right across the street from the field, across from Peter Masserman's house.
Oh, do I know that?
And I'm the one who's using.
Oh, no, I have it, never mind. Across from Peter's?
Yes, right across from Peter's, on the driveways right opposite his. And our property wraps around the corner. Now, tonight, in the meeting, she stated to you that the wells that were tested were the ones who responded. But the communication on October seventh says we didn't have to respond. Today, I get a response from them stating that we didn't participate because we didn't respond. We did what they said.
Same thing, an email right here.
So, we did what they said. And now they wait to say, and now they send an apology.
Okay, I'm just gonna read this on the board in here. On behalf of Blackhead Mountain Lodge, Sterling Environmental Engineering is coordinating with neighbors to monitor nearby residential wells during an upcoming system-wide well pump test on the project site in mid-October. Exact dates to be confirmed. There will be no new drilling associated with this testing. This test is a seventy-two-hour pump test that is intended to simulate how the proposed water system will operate at full occupancy. You have previously signed a consent form to grant the project team access to your property to monitor the well at your residence. That consent form is still valid, but we are reaching out as a courtesy to inform you of the upcoming test. Please let us know if anything has changed regarding your consent to participate in the monetary well monitoring program. If no response is provided, it will be assumed that you wish to continue in the program. We will notify you as outlined below. As with the previous pump test, our team, can we keep this?
Yes.
Thank you. Our team.
We submitted it.
Will need to monitor your well one week prior to an acid pump testing to record baseline models. We will notify you by the phone call at least twenty-four hours prior to accessing your property to install and remove the data water. Thank you for your continued participation in the well monitoring program.
All of those were provided to the town.
There was no further communication from them. And tonight, she stated to you that they responded only to the people that did respond. But according to them, we didn't have to respond. So, she's lying to you tonight.
Well, maybe she was, I don't know if she's lying, but maybe she was misinformed by whoever sent them out.
She, they sent apologies this afternoon to us that they made a mistake.
You're Natalie?
I'm Natalie.
All very suspicious.
So, can you address as to why his well wasn't made part of it when here clearly should have been?
Yeah, so in the second round, right, we did, so they were part of the initial testing when we did all the initial testing on the wells in sight. And as you noted, so the data that was provided to him showed that in the initial testing of his well, there was no interaction. So, in the second round of testing, like I said, some new wells were added and some were removed. So, the ones that were removed were ones that we had seen no impacts in our previous testing. So, that went out to see if, to get a response of who was interested in participating. Some were true, some did not. But not everyone was included in all grounds of testing.
But that's not what that memo says.
If I may just add on that, so we weren't part of the solicitation, but we got the list of houses that were, I guess, approved houses to monitor. So, we had a list of more than, more houses than we could monitor based on equipment. So, we reviewed the locations with HBD onsite and offsite based on the prior testing that was done in the summer where we saw impacts, where we didn't see impacts, to develop which of the, you know, to get a good spread of monitoring. Because we couldn't feasibly monitor every single location during the pump test. And that, so that's how we came to the ones that were monitored. The solicitation itself, you know, we were just getting a list of houses that were available.
So, he was in round one, but removed from round two.
Looking after, if he was removed from round two, the reason he was contacted when we started pumping again is I had an extra pressure transducer. I called Natalie, said we have one more, we can put it in another well. So, she called around to ask and she called him, but we, you know, we had a problem. So, we were just trying to proactively do more because we had an extra pressure transducer.
I appreciate that. Is there a reason why he wasn't reached back out to? Because if I would have gotten this email, I would have expected my well to be tested again based on the way this is communicating. And is there a reason why he wasn't reached out to and said, you know, we've decided not to test your well for these reasons? Versus just not reaching out to him?
So, how many people got this email?
I don't have the number right now.
And how many, how many units did you have to test, like?
There was only two or three who did not respond to that email to either indicate that they wanted to or not wanted to.
But my question is, he said there was only a limited number of units that you had. So, how many did you have?
We had equipment to monitor ten wells, so we had five onsite, five offsite for what we monitored.
So, I'd be curious to know how many emails you sent out? Did you send out fifty?
Well, we did, we don't have it front of us tonight. We provided it up to the town in the submission, so we'll, you know, we'll recopy that and give it to you.
The thing is, and let me ask you, you know, as far as if you did more wells even now, is who else? There's no problem or there's, is a problem. But we already know in just doing the wells we have, we have mitigation. So, the mitigation probably is not going to change if we monitor more wells, right? The mitigation is still probably going to be the same, hooking up to the project or smaller project or what other mitigation is there? Because testing more wells, we already have an issue now. Testing more wells will make the same outcome, so there's still mitigation, right? So, I guess I'm asking, let's look at the mitigation because it seems testing more wells is either gonna say we still should do mitigation, it's not gonna say if we test more well, there's no problem, we still got a problem now. So, I think we gotta go on to the mitigation.
But I also think that, here's the other piece. Say the people across the street that weren't tested again or ever. And the people decide what their problems were. If this gets approval, it's gonna get approval based on the people that are having issues with their wells. So, we need to determine all the people that are gonna have issues with their wells.
But no one is having issues with wells, that's what we're saying.
I will get you, can we let her finish her sentence?
The assertion that this was done, you know, suspiciously is, it's just not sitting well with us. And so, this was done in collaboration with your hydrogeologists. And as they had indicated, they discussed the methodology and which wells would be tested. You cannot test every single well. You're trying to get a representative picture of what is going on. And so, that was done with our hydrogeologists. We didn't skirt, you know, looking at people's wells. This was done, you know, in collaboration with the town. And testing additional wells, as you said, I don't think that we're gonna get that result. But we believe that we have, and we believe that we've provided you with documentation, that we have sufficient water. And that we have, or that sufficient water is there. And that our pumping test indicated that it's not going to affect the aquifer. There are two wells that are an issue. We explained to you why they're an issue and we've offered mitigation. I think, you know, further discussing those is sort of a moot point. We've offered to.
I disagree, I'm to fix it as well.
So, I think, so I think the thing is, is looking at part of the mitigation, what's being proposed now and, you know, and testing more wells, would there be a similar mitigation proposed? Or will there be a different mitigation?
I think the mitigation offers a breaking point. You know, a lot of times with traffic studies, we talk about this. So, we look at an intersection and you think, well, maybe there might be a warrant for a signal, maybe there isn't. And so, during a certain juncture of the project, you reanalyze that this is customary. And so, what we're saying is, at that fifty-six percent inflection point, you know, we are obligated and we have to provide the town will define what actually will be in the report and, you know, what conclusions need to be rendered so that we can allow ourselves to continue. We believe, we believe that we provided you with a report that indicates that there is sufficient capacity.
So, what you're saying is basically the mitigation would be at fifty percent, six percent complete, you'd be doing all this testing again. If there's an issue, the project would have to be adjusted.
Baby, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. First, I'd like to ask, how deep are the wells that you're actually going to use? Water person?
Six hundred feet, it's a fourth wall. Four and five. You know, that'll stand how deep?
Six fifteen and one was four ninety-five on the.
Okay, so.
Six hundred and five hundred feet.
We are on the next parallel road. We live on Stork's Nest, this is Crow's Nest. Ever since they started drilling, we've had a lot of, what would you call it, sediment? Yeah, and we are at six hundred feet. We're on the same aquifer. And I had a suspicion of that. And I honestly think that going out fifteen hundred feet from the property is really not enough to test the area. And I think that if they have the ability, they should randomly test around a little further in some other areas. Because aquifers don't stick to where the property is. It goes far out.
Let me, I can clarify though. That hurts.
Okay.
They're bored to hear from Jen.
It's not hearing from you.
Jen, I will get you right after I answer my, I stopped so baby can talk.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to get to everybody while the board's still addressing questions.
So, you know, I'd like to know if we're at the same level. We happen to have a deep well, can that affect us? Because I believe a study was done of Round Top and our resources are limited. All of Round Top.
Well, obviously, it is affecting us based on the pictures I just showed the board, that we never had this problem before.
When was that picture taken?
Last week. We've had a sediment filter in the house.
And when did you first start seeing the sediment?
No, no, we've had a sediment filter.
No.
Okay, and we had.
I'm just trying to get it down accurately, that's all.
And we would change it every four months, five months. Now, we have to change it every month. It's dark brown and we have, this is what's coming into my tank.
And when did it change from every four, five months to every month?
When they started drilling.
Like, what was it, last fall sometime or summer? I don't know.
I'm, I'm just asking, like, I don't know when it changed.
Within the past year.
I'm just asking for the date of the time.
Twenty twenty-four, within twenty twenty-four somewhere.
I can't give you an exact month, but when they started drilling, this is when this appeared.
Yeah. And that's thirty years of no sediment, to speak of.
All right.
Well, we had some sediment, but.
So, as Ray was saying, you're encouraging us to look at the mitigations. If you look at our hydrologist report, it says, the last sentence, you know, the applicant's consultant should provide a detailed work plan of how the analysis would be completed, including details of long-term water level monitoring of the two wells that were affected. So, I think if we're to strongly consider that as the mitigating factor and how we're able to move forward with the project, I think you need to provide, you know, what is that detailed plan? Is it shrinking the project so it works? You know, what is the proposal of that mitigation? Like, I get the headlines there, but I don't think the board has an actual in-depth proposal to review there. Jen?
This is not coming from me, but for the, and I've said this to the board before, but for the two union members, I would encourage you, the question of, is this well monitoring of offsite well sufficient or not? There are really obvious, clear answers to this, that the DE, the hydrologist. There are really obvious, clear answers to this, that the DE, the hydrologists and experts at the DEC and the DOH, who will ultimately be giving them their permits or not, have in place. And you can foil the same emails and conversations, and you can call these people up, and they will share with you, that they made very clear to KARC and their subcontractors that the way that they were doing the well monitoring was insufficient. That they encouraged them multiple times to have what they called informational sessions with all of the neighbors who are concerned. They refused to do that. I was one of the neighbors. I live at one three six Crow's Nest, which is just across the road from the resort. And I first got the letter in the summer for the summer testing. I wrote back and said, I'm confused about this. It looks like you're testing one well. I want to be tested when you're doing the full operational capacity. I don't want my data to be used. As it has been tonight, they said nine wells were tested. Some of those wells of those nine were my neighbors, who gave consent in good faith, and then their data, in my opinion, was exploited. They were not tested in the testing of well four and five. And in fact, I'm not even sure that the well that was tested in the summer were the same wells that were tested in December. Is that correct? What was the well that was tested in June and July that the Merlino's and Mike Duvernay's property and John Mark and Steven? So that was well five? Now, the wells have also changed names. I'm also requesting that KARC provides a comprehensive map of every single well that was drilled, whether or not you tested it in a pump test or not. Their well completion reports they submitted to the DEC, there are at least ten, which means they punctured ten wells into the landscape. And the name and labeling of those wells has changed. It's like one, two, three, A, B, four, five, nine, eleven, thirteen. I don't know if these are just administrative errors or what's going on, but I, I have personally not seen any sort of comprehensive map that shows us what was drilled in the summer versus what was drilled in these tests where the data is being presented to you now. I had asked, and I, actually, I submitted my letters and my emails with KARC at the last meeting, where I explained that, I said, I don't want to participate in the well test in June, or whenever it was, because I don't want my data used for a well that's not going to be, end up being used in the, in the actual system. Please stay in touch with me when you are testing the actual system that you plan to use for this resort. And Natalie responded and said that she would. There would be another opportunity in the future to do exactly that, and they would be in touch. You already have that email. I submitted it on the record at the last meeting, and I never heard from them again. I had made it very clear in these meetings that I very much wanted to be tested, that I had water quality issues. I submitted an entire timeline of that to this board. So I am just another voice telling you that we have been as proactive as we possibly can as members of the community to participate in this. And there has been, not, there has not been a good faith response in return. So I am also really concerned about this mitigation strategy because, and I want to come back to this. The question of whether or not this is sufficient or not, this is fractured bedrock drilling, and I encourage you to speak to the experts at the DEC, not me, who are actual water experts, and can tell you that that style of drilling can affect wells not just nearby or adjacent, but can have unpredictable and volatile consequences for wells, you know, a mile, two miles, five miles, even more. And there are case studies showing this. So the problem is that they are not just testing not enough households, but in far too small an area. And so there might be somebody who lives in Round Top or Caro and who's having well issues that they, we have no idea. And so the problem is, their mitigation strategy for two wells, it's not just in the adjacent area. It could be a lot of us, and none of us have been looped into this. And I think this could be, you know, they're talking about, okay, we'll deal with this later and see if there's consequences and problems. What happens when you have hundreds of people in this town who are having well problems? I mean, who's going to pay for that to be monitored and evaluated? Who's going to pay for it to be fixed? And what if in some cases it can't be fixed? I'm going to also say that something that we have not at all discussed is the water quality testing.
Right.
My understanding with the DOH and DEC testing, and I'm asking this directly to KARC and the hydro, the engineers here, is why was there no water quality testing or results included with this report?
Jen, that's my point. That's why.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, because that is what is part of the definition of what a seventy-two hour pump test requires. Do any of you want to ask them that? Because they never respond to us. There's no water quality data. They did not test for contaminants, for pollution, for sediment, or anything. So they're only going to, they never answer us, so. They don't have to?
It seems like.
Well.
There's a fourth wall here.
So my question specifically, since I've been accused of.
Okay, your water quality or their water quality?
No, I'm saying the people who were tested on the report. Why is there no water quality data in the report for the six wells that were tested?
As are required by DEC.
And DOH.
So they're required to do water quality on your wells or their well?
On this, on, when you do a seventy-two hour pump test, and they're submitting it, as they said, as their complete secret evidence for you. So where's the water quality data on the wells that were tested and are part of their report? Part of the reason I'm asking this, and a lot of you know this already, is that a lot of people in the area have had significant water quality deterioration of not just sedimentation, but bacteria contamination. There has been certain wells that are completely non-potable at this point, and people cannot drink them, as I mentioned in the last meeting, and submitted with images and timestamp photographs and everything else.
And your water quality tests to prove that?
Yes, I submitted those to the board and to the town.
But do you know how much a water quality test is? And you're asking me as a resident?
I have no idea.
She's not asking you to do it. She's just asking if you have it.
I'm asking if you have it.
No, not for my well, but for other.
Twenty sixty-five dollars.
Other well, other people's wells that have had more extreme problems, where they can no longer drink their water because it's full of E. coli. Now, I'm not saying that that is a direct causation, but when you're not testing for it and you're not including any water quality assessment in your data, how can we know? So we have a lot of people in the direct vicinity of this project, but maybe beyond, who are experiencing adverse effects. And one of my issues with this report is it says no, especially for the Pulpalwell, it says no adverse effects were seen. But that's not true. His well is full, his well is, you can't, he can't use his water anymore. It's, it's disgusting. It's toxic. Now, whether or not that's directly related, even though the timing syncs up almost directly, when you're not doing proper testing and evaluation, there's no way to know that. So we are, it is not just about water quantity of how much water, which is a big concern, but also water quality and the health and safety of the people who live here. And that has been a really big concern that I haven't seen addressed anywhere in any of their submissions.
Does anybody else have any comments? Sorry, what's your name?
My name's John Lawrence. I live right below on Blackhead Mountain Road. And I just wanted to address you guys and just really beg you to be careful and thoughtful when, when considering what you're going to do with this. I'm not, I'm, I have background in development. I work for a large developer in South Florida. And I know, and I've seen the different kinds of development that exist out there, and there are different kinds. And they're not all good for the local community. And the company I worked for was the most predatory company in the state. And this is a private equity fund that's going to really, really affect everyone that lives around it. It's not going to improve our property values. How am I going to sell, how will we sell our house when we have to disclose at the time of sale that there's ethyl acetate flowing down the creek that runs through our front yard?
That's, DEC would not allow that.
That's correct.
Just like what Jen was talking about, water quality, she has good points. But the DEC and the DOH have to approve.
But isn't that like the standard?
Here's where I disagree with you. They can, they can approve the project at the point.
Jen, can we get back to you?
John, can I, can you?
Sure.
They can approve at the point, but what happens when two years later, he does have an effluent problem going through his stream? Who's enforcing and monitoring it?
Jen, can we let John finish, please? Everybody needs the time to talk.
So this has been a highly emotional thing. I'm not an angry guy, and I'm in here like shouting things out. I apologize. This is really affecting the people that live around it. And it's going to ruin a lot of properties. I don't care what anyone says. Furthermore, I don't even know if the town is able to bring this whole thing to fruition. I don't know if we got what it takes to do that. And that's not going to class up the top of the mountain. It's going to destroy the top of the mountain. The money that comes to that will enrich a small group of people and will not trickle out. There'll be some tax revenue, sure. It's not worth it. It's not the type of development that's good and sustainable and will improve the area. The Main Street developments going on is amazing. More of that. I know this is a big property. This is a financial instrument and nothing more. And it's going to, it's going to enrich a few people, and the rest of us are going to pay the price unfortunately. So that's why everyone's a little bit pissed off, is because we're not even being given the consideration. We can't have an open dialogue with the PR firm, which let's be clear on what they are, the PR firm that is working on this. We haven't been, been given a chance to even talk to them. We could start like around the building communications via two emails that never get, you know, why? Why is that necessary? There's a whole lot of smoke and mirrors and weird stuff going on that's got everybody a little bit twisted up. We don't understand why this is such a spoken dagger mission here. All the details are, it's pretty plain to see that this is like, this is not for the good of the community. And I know this isn't like really germane or important to, to the actual details of what's going on, but that's what's happening, right? These are neighbors' homes that are getting affected, and they will. And to say anything else is a lie. It's untrue. And I have experience, because I've seen what's happening with communities around a six-hundred acre residential communities we built for GL Homes in Florida. Most of them suffer. Simple fact. This is a financial instrument, a development, and it's not going to benefit us. That's all. And again, I apologize for my emotional.
Oliver?
Yeah, Oliver Hall, Zoning Board of Appeals. I was at the zoning, Saratoga Zoning Planning Conference the other day, and I don't recall seeing you. I don't know how many other members of the board. I think I saw Ed. Maybe I was mistaken.
I've been to that conference.
But, but I didn't see you there, and I'm questioning whether or not, you know, why weren't you there? There were seven hundred members of planning boards and zoning boards and supervisors of towns in eastern New York, and I didn't see you there. Now, this is very important, because we need to be educated. And that needs to be educated on the new developments of the law and what we're supposed to be doing here. Now, I leave that up for my next question. How much do you know about SECRE? Have you studied SECRE? Are you aware that SECRE requires that a determination be made within two sixty days of a filing an application of the weather and not, the, it's, the status, whether it's a class, class one, a class two, or an unclassified? And where I ask you that because we're here fourteen months out, and we haven't heard a word from that. And now you're not complying with the law of the state of New York. And I have a real problem with that whole thing. Now, what I do here today is something I heard in the conference, is they, you're starting to think in the right terms. I didn't hear that for a whole year from this board. But SECRE requires one or determination first. Then, if you, after that, there's scoping, and you're already talking about mitigation. We haven't even got the scoping. So you can't bypass SCREEP. You've got to comply with all of that.
Sorry, Jen, I can't see.
Oh, I just have some very specific questions that I'll, I want to read off on behalf of Friends of Round Top Incorporated that we would like responses to. So we don't want these lumped in with general questions. We would like answers to these questions. So I've already said one, which I raised earlier. Where were the water samples from well four and well five with the seventy-two hour continuous pumping tests in November and December? Were they sent to a New York State certified lab for analysis per DEC and DOH requirements for public water systems? If that was done, why were the results not included in the Sterling report? And if they were not done, those seventy-two hour tests need to be redone. Question two, why did your analysis of adverse impact collect data only on water drawn down and recovery that excluded water quality of both onsite and offsite monitored wells? We would also like clarification on the owner of well four and well five named in the Sterling report, G six. It says Baxter Hudson Valley Mountain House. What is that entity? Who is the principal on record? Where are they located, and what's their relationship with RCBG JD manager? We are wondering, why didn't Sterling correct the errors and omissions in KARC for water demand estimates? Here they are. The 2014 New York State Design Standards load rate for a health club without water saving reduction is twenty gallons per day. With water saving reduction at sixteen gallons per day. But on the report, it says it's eight gallons per day, as KARC noted for its spot use. The 2014 Design Standards lists the load rate for pool use at ten gallons a day, or ten gallons per day for swimmer, and that is omitted. The Design Standard lists additional load rates for lodging units with kitchens and instant garbage disposals. And while Sterling used the load rates for lodging rooms only, this is misleading because the branded residences will obviously have these upper penalties, plus washer and dryer hookups. The Design Standard also has a different load rate for the opening hours of food service. Sterling uses a load rate of twenty-eight gallons per day per seat at the restaurant and the main lodge, where the actual use is more likely to be closer to a twenty-four hour restaurant. Another question, the EAF Part One lists Green County IDA as an agency approving a permit application. What permit application will the applicant be submitting to the IDA? EAF Part One does not list the New York State Department of Labor as an agency approving a permit application, but we will need approval from the Department of Labor for obsessus abatement because most of the structures on the property were built prior to nineteen seventy. The EAF Part One does not list the streams on the property identified as Article fifteen streams by a DEC staff visit in ABU twenty twenty-four. Why not? That should be corrected. And this is, the last question here is both for KARC, but also this is super important for our planning board, which is that the Dropbox folder managed by KARC has not been updated with public hearing comments and letters submitted by anyone, but also involved agencies. It has not been updated since August twenty twenty-four. So the public record of this application file is woefully outdated. That needs to be corrected like yesterday. There are letters from the state agencies, from politicians, from experts, from the public, and none of that is reflected in the record, and it's like, you know, two to six months delayed. That really needs to get fixed. So, thank you. I will submit this sheet of paper.
Do you have the copies?
Yeah.
I'm Patrick Gageerson, fifty-two Walnut. I'm actually down the unnamed stream from, from John and Emma. You know, back in March six, I guess, I just checked my email, I sent questions about what's going to happen to, not the water. I had concerns about the water being pulled out, but I had concerns about what's going to happen with this water. And back then, the thought was thirty thousand gallons a day would get dumped into the stream, and now it's up to forty-six thousand. I asked at the time if this water is not so clean that it's okay to put in my stream, where people actually do, not this year because it was so drought-stricken, but in general, people do go in the stream and swim in it. but in general, people do go in the stream and swim in it. People, the stream is above where my well is, so I assume, I'm not a hydrologist, but I assume the water works its way down into my well. If this water is so good, and so good that can make its way down into Cairo, Cairo's water supply, why can the water, some of it, not be reused? Um, I asked this question back in March. Are there any plans, can make any plans, any made to reuse some of this water? Put the water into the pools, put the, you, if you're building these buildings fresh, you can do piping so the water can be reused for, uh, for flushing. Recycling, but there's no, there's been no effort. And I, you know, there's a comment earlier, like, we feel like we ask questions and they're never answered, because as far as I can tell, they actually never get answered, um, from us. Uh, it was actually refreshing today to hear some questions from the board that they did, you know, made some attempts to address. In all the meetings I've been to, I've heard very few questions from the board. Mostly just, sort of just absorbing, but not dialogue, and since there's no reply to us. But why are there not, going back to my, my original email from eleven and, and questions at this meeting eleven months ago, why are there not any attempts to reuse, recycle this water? Because then, when you'd be pulling less out, you'd probably have less effect on people's wells. But, and I, you know, I feel like there was a comment by the gentleman over there that he felt he'd been taken hostage earlier. I feel like I'm being taken hostage. I live here, and I'm gonna face forty-six thousand gallons a day of water dumped into the stream that runs in my property, um, that's quote-unquote "treated almost enough to drink." Well, if it is, then why don't you keep it?
And drink it.
Um, and drink it. Um, but I feel like I'm being taken hostage, because I have to then live with this on an ongoing basis. And I eventually have to be able, someday, hopefully, to sell my property, and I have to sell it with the concept that the stream on my property is most of the time, or gonna be predominantly just affluent from the resort. Gross, yes. And can they, will they ever answer my question or anyone else's questions?
So, I, I don't have the answer, but I know that question has been answered, because I've, I've read the answer before. I don't have.
I searched through their papers.
So, I, I'll, I'll look for it.
And I could not find any answers.
Get it for you, but.
I know there's thousands of pages.
About a year ago.
That was about the time they submitted their application.
Well, they're, they're here, ask them right now. They're here.
Do you remember what the answer was? You read it?
Why is it, why is there no recycling? Can you ask them why they don't recycle any of the water? Because they won't answer me.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can't direct, the New York State requires that when it comes out of the system, it has to run in a stream for a certain period of time. So they're forbidden from that going directly into a pool or from, to a water source.
But we are taking water directly from the wastewater treatment plant, and it is going out higher up into the system, right, up into the site, so that it is flowing through our stormwater management system, being infiltrated through the system. So it is, in some ways, it's going into the stormwater management system, which we are using for irrigation. So it is, in some ways, being reused, but yes, we cannot directly take that and put that into a pool or into, into the system.
If you treated it better?
The output is going out on, on the site.
So there's no way they can, they can up their treatment a little bit to?
The Department of Health, from what has been explained to me from our engineers and from, um, the applicants, is that the Department of Health does not allow you to go from an affluent plant to a bottle of water.
There's no way to treat it better so that it meets the standard?
I, I can call the Department of Health on Monday and ask them a specific question, but how it's been explained to me over the process is, that's the way New York State works. You can't go from a treatment plant to a bottle of water in New York. There may be other states that allow you to do that, but that's why the board asked. Originally, the discharge was much lower towards the property line, and the board asked them to move it all the way up top to the pond next to their main house so that it would work down through their entire site before going to anybody else's property.
Okay, why not use some of the water, re-pipe it in for the toilets? There's, there gotta be some way to.
Because your water, your toilet water comes out of the sink.
Not, they're building it fresh. I mean, there are other places that have, that do work that, you know?
When you pipe water out, the sink and the toilet come up from your house.
Uh, my house it does, but if you're building it fresh, they can, there are places that do that. You can build it, you're building there, these are not built. You can pipe. I, I don't have an example for me, but I will.
Can you, can you bring us an example next week?
I will talk to John and we'll get you, uh, examples.
One second, I will get to you.
Yes, just to, to answer a question, I'm riding north on the Civilian Year for the project. You are correct, and confirming the Sterling, we're not allowed to do that directly. When the suggestion was made to move the discharge of the treated water up the hill, we actually discussed that with DEC, and they approved for us to do that into that stream quarter. That all comes down into the large pond that you see there, and all of that goes back down into the groundwater table. So there's, that is not directly discharged to your stream. It's, as a matter of fact, less will come out of there. That's, that is our method of putting it back into groundwater table.
Is this by means of sailing?
Yeah, there's.
There's nothing active in that pond?
Three million gallons of storage in that massive pond. So that treated water goes into what is basically surface water, and filters back down.
So how much water is gonna end up going into our stream when it gets to the end? Like, so there was forty-six thousand a day going into your pond?
I think that depends, and, you know, I'm not a professional, but we've only got an hour, and there's a bunch of other hands, so I'd make sure. That depends on how much rain we get and a whole bunch of other factors. So I don't think we can say like, there's gonna be twenty thousand gallons this week and five thousand gallons next week. But honestly, I think the accurate answer is, it depends. Oliver, there's somebody ahead of you, I will get to you. Uh, no. There's been somebody before you.
Oh, oh!
The man in the back.
I, I just, what I say, you know, and then I, I kinda wanna follow up on what Oliver was saying before. I mean, this, this evening has been illuminating, and it's, I really appreciate, uh, the more in-depth, uh, engagement the board has, has given on, on water issues. Uh, but this, again, feels so premature. I mean, we have a process by which all these things, I mean, you know, everyone's talking about, where is that information? We talked about that a year ago. We don't get our answers to these questions. We should have posdecked this a year ago. And EIS is the structure by which we can gather all this information. The SECR requires the applicant to systematically answer all the public's questions. There's a public comment period, and then they gather all that. There's scoping, in which, we're looking at a ton of other issues. I'm delighted that the focus has been on water, and as you can see, there's a real serious issue. But are we gonna get the same service for traffic, for, for waste, uh, for carrying capacity to land? Not to mention the fact that it borders against forever wildland. What does that do to the long path that walks along, uh, you know, that, that goes right along the edge of the property? I think ultimately, again, this just feels really improper. We should posdeck this, there should be a full EIS process where all this information is as a catalog and put into one document so we can all see it and see how water interacts with other issues. We're, we're so narrowly focused on water, which is good, but that should be done in the context of a broader environmental review. And I, I think that's what's required. I mean, I, I talked to other land use planners, they are amazed that, you know, this board is considering doubling the size of Round Top in terms of population, and yet doesn't wanna do an EIS that has prolonged this for a year when, you know, I, I mean, the applicant said today, look, we've finished our homework, pens down, like, we gave you everything. We believe we have a complete application. SECR says that upon, you know, receiving a complete application, the board has to rule within twenty days. I think we were there last January, and here we are a year later. Uh, I, I think these discussions are important, but I think they will be one legal, and I think a lot more focused and productive if it's all in one document, which is required by law. So, again, I, I really think that the board should posdeck this as soon as possible and start the EIS process.
Oliver?
Who's the TDE?
The who?
The TDE. Uh, you didn't miss, you didn't go to the conference. Town Designated Engineer.
For this project?
For this project, particularly.
All right, thank you.
Who's the hydrogeologist?
Uh, his name is James, and I'm gonna, not even try to say his last name. Hanson Ben-Gleif is the name of the firm, and unfortunately, he is not feeling well tonight. He caught a bug a few days ago, which is why.
Eat the water.
We got this late tonight. No, he doesn't live any, he doesn't live there at all.
Is, is that document in the Dropbox? Where is this report?
It was posted on the town's website when it was given to us at noon today.
Oh, I also added some of the, um, updated comments and public, public comments and questions. Thank you, Oliver.
I got Brenda, I got him, and I got you.
Asbestos, I have such a problem, because I've been through this with the town already, got balled up by the town for opening my big mouth when they couldn't have made a sale with a dozen buildings. Someone needs to explain why the Department of Labor is not on your grid. I'm speaking to a car victim. Why is the Department of Labor not an agency on this grid? I brought it up a year ago, I brought it up six months ago, I've done all of these. There is nobody else that, that issues clearance or has oversight. D O A, I'm sorry, DEC managed the haul off of, of the stuff. There is nothing, nobody, not on our code enforcement, uh, website, not in the code, the, the building permit application that mentions the word asbestos survey, the DOH. There's a link on the, on, on code enforcement to, uh, for asbestos, making it perfectly voluntary, because it's not asked on your application. It's also skirted on their grid, because it's a pollutant that does take extra time. It's a pollutant that does have to be obeyed. For all the people, this is me. You see me? There's your nineteen, that's nineteen forty-eight.
I know where you're coming from.
Okay. So why? I wanna answer to why. I don't want it to go to wait. Because there's no other answer, there's no DEC, and there's no DOH that comes across. Go ahead.
Sure. So it's the Building Department that issues permits with respect to?
So you wanna toss the building department?
And it's a non-discretionary, so the list of agencies in the EAF are all that issue discretionary permits. The Building Department's permits with respect to asbestos or anything else are non-discretionary, meaning you have to meet A, B, and C, and I issue your application.
Find it. It's not asked in your application.
Because we, we need planning board approvals before you can submit to the Building Department.
Why have you not even mentioned it? Why do you not even mention it?
Because that's at the Building Department.
Because there's a process, and you have to come here first. Then you go to the Building Department, asbestos is dealt with there.
I can answer a couple of others.
The Building Department doesn't even have to acknowledge it, because it's completely voluntary, because it's not on your application. So there's no one in Building and Code that's gonna ask that question. The, uh, the state recognized this problem in 2013 and issued guidance to all building and code enforcement in the state, asking them, would they please include this before they even issue a permit? This is kind of.
We can't address Building Department.
Okay, I am pointing out, they would love to skirt it, the town would love to skirt it. No one's gonna skirt it, that's not true.
This is one of the reasons Kevin Hicks is not, is sitting here.
That's not true, and the pla, the Building Department will address asbestos.
Wait, why? Who will make them?
They have to get approval here first.
Who will make the Building and Code Enforcement ask the question that they have to answer yes to?
Have you talked to Stacy Sprague?
I don't have to talk to Stacy Sprague, I weave the law.
But if you talk to her, she would tell you.
Oh, I should trust her. I just trust her, she'll remember to ask them. Why isn't that question anywhere in your application for Building Department?
Again, like, we cannot speak to that, we are on the Building Department.
You have to know that this is not.
We don't have the authority to do so. We cannot address Building and Code.
The town supervisor knows it's a problem.
Nobody's letting it go.
Yeah.
If and when we get planning board approvals, we will apply to the Building Department for whatever permits, asbestos removal, state code requirements, you know? Nobody's skirting anything. It's a step in the process.
I don't think that's fair, but you didn't include it.
Can I finish? Thank you. So another procedural question, with respect to KARC's website or link that they have, those are documents that have just been submitted by the applicant in KARC, so that's not the official record. If people want the official record of all the documents with respect to public comments, that would be through the clerk's office and through the town. The town is the keeper of all the official records. KARC set up this website so that the members of the public can easily access whatever we submit, so that way they didn't have to keep going through and, and asking the planning board clerk if something's been submitted. So that's, with respect to that, um, the planning board has a full record. KARC's website is just our submissions. Next, with respect to the question on SECR, somebody had before. So I'm looking at a resolution back last year in January. The planning board declared this, or classified this as a type-two act, a type-one action, sorry, under SECR. So you guys already passed a resolution last year declaring this a, a type-one action, and then that's when you circulated for your intent to be lead agency. So at this point, you know, the board, you're taking your hard look at this point, and you're gonna determine whether there are any significant adverse environmental impacts. So that, that's the next step. You are, you know, you're the lead agency, and now it's your job to take a hard look and determine whether there's any significant adverse environmental impacts, uh, and whether an environmental, uh, statement is necessary. We feel like we've provided enough information where you can make that determination, and we feel that determination should be a negative declaration, which means you don't need an environmental impact statement, because we've given you all the information that we need.
Can I ask, can I ask our engineer? Can you please, can you please comment to that question? They feel they've done everything, a negative that should be done. What's your opinion and what's your advice on that?
Based on the information we, we were provided this week?
Yes.
I don't think the board can act on that.
Act on what?
On the, 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 uh, declaration of determination.
No, no, I'm talking about, so you're saying we can't, either declare a negative or a positive?
Correct, at this moment.
And when?
I'll leave that up to the attorney.
Which, so you don't wanna give your opinion on this?
Not in this form.
Okay. And Jen, who are you dealing with in DEC and DOH?
Uh, there's, um. Prophiling? Peak, what's it, Kristen Peak, there's, uh, Jamie, um.
Malcolm.
Malcolm, which I just wanna clarify for any of the board members who were here when Joe said he was no longer on the project, that's not true. He's very much still on the project.
I was just telling you, I talked to Kristen, I think. Kristen told me that she had taken over and Jamie wasn't working on it.
Okay. Jamie's still working on it. That's at DEC.
I have, I have no interest in you working on projects.
Matt Curry is that person at DOH. Yep.
Who is at DOH?
Matt Curry. Matt Curry, and, um, Michael Cousia Carmel is a geologist and hydrologist at the DEC at the main office, who is really like the expert and will be able to explain to you what I was just relaying through, what I've heard from him tonight about the type of fractured bedrock drilling they're doing and how it affects surrounding wells and surrounding aquifers. It's very different from other types of drilling. So I would encourage you to reach out to him for that explanation.
Thanks. Um, I just wanna go on the record and say, first of all, I'm not anti-development. I don't think a lot of us are anti-development. This isn't about that. This is the scale of this development seems out of character and dangerous to the community in the surrounding area. But I have one simple question, and I have one really redundant question. But the first question is, how many people live in Round Top, approximately? Come on, you're the chair of the, you should know the population.
Six fifty.
Six fifty. Okay. But I just wanna know that and have it on record. The other question is, the redundant one, which was just sort of vaguely answered, but not very well, between the engineer and a member of the planning board, which is, what has been, I understand you don't think the application is complete enough, but I also feel like there seems to be a real inability with our own infrastructure as a planning board to do this. Why don't we declare a positive declaration in order to have the assistance? Why don't we declare a positive declaration in order to have the assistance to do a more accurate read if this is an appropriate development? Why are you hesitating, and why has this gone on now for over a year? I don't quite understand, and I wonder if you could answer to that. And, and actually, I wouldn't mind if you got really detailed, and that might be a question for you, because it just seems like there's a lot of people in here who are very informed, who are very experienced and have been on boards, and they're telling you this. There's a, a member of the Sierra Club, who I know does a lot of activist work around, you know, protecting environment, things like that, but I mean, these are people who have worked in this for a long time, and they're very experienced, and they're in your community. Why don't you listen to them? What's going on?
So, we've been listening, and we've-
You're listening.
Comments. That was your question? I answered your question?
No, his question was, why don't you declare a positive SEACR?
With a fine column, it's fine.
That was the question. That was the question. Why aren't we doing that?
It's gonna hit their pockets, not ours.
The board is conducting our review, and when we get completed with our review, we'll make a determination.
Without-
Sorry, I can't.
That was a really vague answer, again.
That was a terrible answer.
Is there a possibility, possibility of any single significant adverse effect in any category? Any possibility? The question is not, if you declare negative, the language has it as a statement of certainty. There, there is not possibility for significant adverse environmental impact. So in, in, if it's positive, it's, there's a possibility of that. And just at the scale and scope of this thing alone, and again, I am just repeating what is on the state of New York's website explaining what SEACR is. Then you, you make a pos deck, and you bring in all the additional resources in the framework. So I do think the question of why are you stalled for 14 months is a completely legitimate question.
And I'd ask every individual member of the board to answer this, because that's what the conference said, you should do. You should ask every member of the board what their opinion is and why they don't do something.
What's the rush? I appreciate that, Oliver.
Everything, everything you've been discussing, the water, the land, everything you've been discussing has to do with scoping under SEACR, and in order to do scoping, you have to have a positive deck first. We shouldn't be discussing this until you make a positive deck. Are you going to deny that there hasn't been an environmental impact on these people's water? Or the chance of an environmental impact on people whose water is muddy? That's already true, that there has to be a positive deck, and you have to do it now so that we can use, do the scoping, look into what other animals are up there. There's eagles at, where you have to consider whether there are eagles up there. There's the fish in the water. This is a designated trout stream. They've shinkled here. All of these things are part of the environmental impact. When you did my property and I gave a little piece of land for people that are never gone, there was no environmental impact. Nothing was changing, but things are changing here. And what I am wondering is what is really behind it? This is not a reflection on you people, but a reflection on who is really behind this project? Who really wants it? It's like, really huge. I mean, I'm just like, it's really, what is going on? That this is, that this is taking so long and that you guys are fighting it? Who is, who is the, the power behind this? Who wants this resort? And I'm not talking about the people building it. I'm talking about who are the people who want to come to this resort? I'm just wondering, but you have to do a positive declaration before we can really go on to anything else. It's just the way the law states, and if you don't do it pretty soon, you will. I mean, it's an Article 78 in the making.
Let's face it, it's an Article 78 either way, okay?
Is there anybody who has a comment who hasn't spoken tonight?
I do, Joe. I just wanna clarify something that was said at the last open public hearing. Doesn't have a ton to do with the project, but it was a complete mistruth that was stated on the record that the Masman family is a partner in this, and that's the reason why we are supportive of it, and that the owners owe us 51% or some, whatever number somebody grabbed out of the air. That entire comment that was on the record, you can go back and check the tapes, is a complete lie and a complete farce. And I just ask that, when people throw other people's lives, finances, personal matters into it, that you make sure you have the facts right first. That's all. The Masman family is not a partner in this, okay? We do support it. I'll tell you right now, we support it wholeheartedly. But we're not a partner, and if this gets denied, it was stated that it falls back into our lap, and that's why we're supportive of it. Complete lie. So before you say, make statements, please make sure you have the facts right. That's all. Thank you, Joe.
Can I add onto that? Can I add onto that? There's a lot of other discussions here, and one of the things everybody always talks about, the population of Round Top, this project, it's not double the population, because transit, hotel gas are not accounted for in the population. If you do that, then you gotta count how many beds are in each resort, and that will take our population around that very high. The other thing that we all have to remember is, yeah, they've drilled some wells, but there's been a lot of wells drilled in Round Top alone, besides this project. Some people that have had well, well issues have had filters on them. Yeah, all of a sudden, some of these people are having more sediment in their well. Is it necessarily caused by this, or was it caused by the drought, or was it caused by somebody else drilling nearby? It was a thing.
Don't let any speak, whatever else speaks.
Thing is, if you go and you probably look, and I'm not an engineer or anything, but I bet you if you go and have your wells, and you tested your wells, a lot of them are gonna show bacteria, you know? And I've had that with wells in my private house before this project even got built, the first well. So you just gotta be open-minded a little bit, all right? That's all I got.
Anybody else have a comment who hasn't spoken tonight? Ed, do you have anything? All right. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second? All four?
I have never answered a question.
I don't know. I'm not part of the friends around talking. I'll have to ask Champ and Ginny. I'm pretty busy with my job.
Really?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a pretty high attention rate.
You really have to pay attention.
Oh, these are Jen, CJ.
Hey.
How you been, buddy?
I guess I could stop. I was told never stop reporting, but-
Never. Just when I got out.